Good evening. I called to order the monthly meeting of the Board of Trustees. As you all know, it's May and we're just feels like minutes away from one of the biggest celebrations of the entire year, which is the graduations of our two high schools. So we're all looking forward to that, to see all of our students graduate and become great successes and get back to our community. Earlier this evening, we had our retiree reception and some of those folks are still here. So if everybody wouldn't mind, let's give all of our retirees a round of applause for their service. And lastly, before I move on to Ms. Kessler, I wanted to take a moment to recognize Mr. McLean Tool, who is not only a former board member, but he was also a former House of Representatives and his beautiful wife, Ms. Tool, who retired from our district and gave years of her service and life to our district. So let's give Mr. Tool a round of applause. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Kessler.
We're always happy to have some of our students come and join us and participate in our board meeting. And tonight, we have two airport students. Mark Ritchie is going to be doing our invocation. Mark is a senior at Airport High School where he currently has a GPA of 5.378. He has participated in the early college program and recently earned an associate degree from Midlands Technical College in both arts and science. Mark has played in the airport chess club throughout high school and also plays with the Columbia Chess Club where he competes in monthly tournaments. He has participated in the Boy Scouts of America since the age of 12 and attained the rank of Eagle Scout in September of 2021. The crowning achievement of Mark's career in scouting was the Eagle Project he led at the church where he built a wheelchair ramp. He will attend the University of South Carolina Honors College to study mathematics and would love to teach mathematics at USC. If you want to start on a high school or middle school level, we'd be glad to sign you up tonight. And then we have Jacob Comensy, who will be doing our pledge of allegiance. Jacob is a senior at Airport High School where he currently has a GPA of 5.418. He has participated in the early college program and recently earned his associate degree from Midlands Technical College in both arts and science with the highest honor, summa cum laude. Congratulations. Jacob is a part of the Midlands Technical College Theta Kappa Tau Chapter, and he has also received the Seal of Bile literacy for Polish. While at Airport, he has participated in the Beta Club, cross-country, and volleyball. Jacob participates in service projects and events through the youth group at St. Joseph's Church and also works at the Regal Theater. He plans to attend the University of South Carolina to major in English with a minor in creative writing. He would like to pursue a career as an author or librarian. Gentlemen, thank you and take the podium.
Heavenly Father, thank you for the work that you have done throughout all of us. Be with our board members this meeting and help them as they make their decisions. Amen.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mark and Jacob.
Thank you very much. It's always great to see some of our students. Next, board members will move on to the consent agenda. And as part of our consent agenda, we have just the approval of the minutes from the April 18th board meeting and the May 4th board workshop. So without any objection, those minutes will stand approved? Okay, so done. And now I'll move on to honors and accomplishments of students and staff. Dr. Hafner.
Thank you, madam.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will tell you, we have a healthy list of honors and accomplishments for tonight's meeting, but we've had many more rolling in every day this week from nearly every grade level in academics, athletics, the arts, and more. We'll be sharing these latest recommendations with you on social media, on our websites, and through other communications. So be on the lookout. Now on to tonight's honors and accomplishments. First, Lexington 2 is proud to have five of our high school students selected as prestigious South Carolina Teaching Fellows. We will hear more about the program and these outstanding Airport and Brooklyn Casey students.
Good evening. Good evening. Happy to be here. And I am honored to present to you five students from both high schools in Lexington 2 this exceptional honor. These students have been awarded the prestigious South Carolina Teaching Fellowship. And if they're our students, they're coming up as we speak. They own it. Airport High School, we've got Sidney Evans, Harley Maciver, Thomas Reddick. And from Brooklyn Casey High School, we have Cadence Beckman and Ella Everett. A little bit about this, and then I'm gonna have each student have the opportunity to come up here, tell you which one they are and what they're going to be doing next. But these fellows will receive up to $24,000 in funds from this program, which is up to $6,000 for the four years while they complete a degree leading into teacher certification. It is the initial certification. The State's Teaching Fellows Program, which is administered by the Center for Educator Recruitment, Retention, and Advancement, also known as SARAH, was established in 1999 by the South Carolina General Assembly with the mission to recruit talented high school seniors into the teaching profession. Each year, the program provides fellowships for up to 200 high school seniors, and it's exciting to see that five are right here at Airport High School and Brooklyn Casey High School. So at this time, I'd like to celebrate the students standing behind me, and they're gonna tell you a little bit about what's next, and hopefully they'll be back working in Lexington 2 very soon.
Good afternoon. My name is Harley Maciver, and I will be attending University of South Carolina to study early childhood education.
Hello, I'm Thomas Reddick, and I'm going to be going to the University of South Carolina to study mathematics and then earn my MA TCU.
Hello, I'm Ella Everett. I'm going to Winthrop University for special education.
Hello, I'm Cadence Beckman, and I plan on going to Newbury and majoring in secondary education, specifically biology.
Please give them a round of applause.
Thank you so much. And if you will, just go over and see Dr. Cooper on your way out, and she'll offer you a contract. All right, very good. Next up, our archery teams have had an outstanding season, which included a trip to Nationals for some of our middle and high school archers. We're gonna hear more about that now if the team, the group
Good evening, board members, Dr. Hafner, Lexington 2 faculty, staff, families, and community members. My name is Robin Walsh, and I am one of the coaches of the Brooklyn Casey and the Busby Creative Arts Academy Archery Program. This is, with me is Drew Pittman. He also coaches the team. We are here to share with you about the programs that Brooklyn Casey and BCAA just went through. We went to, without your overwhelming support, we could not have done this. As participants in the U.S. Eastern Nationals Tournament Louisville, the archers made program history. It is the first time we have had the archers qualified to the highest level. Three of the four categories we competed in last weekend qualified for the open championship to be held in Myrtle Beach. But before I get to the specifics, I'd like each archer to share their name and their specific school.
My name is Hannah Flannikin, and I go to Busby Creative Arts Academy.
My name's Jaya Johns, and I go to Busby Creative Arts Academy.
My name is Wesley Daniels, and I go to Busby Creative Arts Academy.
I'm Elizabeth Pittman, and I go to Brooklyn Casey High School.
I'm Charlotte Wojcik, and I go to Busby Creative Arts Academy.
I am Sarah Pittman, and I go to Busby Creative Arts Academy.
I'm Dylan Bridges, and I go to Busby Creative Arts Academy.
My name is Preston, and I go to Busby Creative Arts Academy.
My name is Christian, and I go to Busby Creative Arts Academy.
My name is Colton, and I go to Busby Creative Arts Academy.
My name is Tamaya, and I go to Busby Creative Arts Academy.
It's amazing they can shoot in front of 21,000 people, but they can't say hi. All right, back to the Eastern Nationals update. Busby Creative Arts Academy competed in the IBO 3D Division as a middle school team. They shot their best team score of 1551 out of a perfect 1,800, placing them 89th in the Eastern Region. This places them eighth in the state with only 106 points behind first place. Our individual archer, Zeke Bedura, competed in the Bullseye Division as well and qualified for the open championship, coming into the top 10% of 2,700 archers. He's currently ranked 13th in the state of all middle school boys. Brooklyn Casey archers Jackson Allen and Elizabeth Pittman were our high school qualifiers for Nationals. Senior Jackson Allen participated in the IBO 3D Division, and sophomore Elizabeth Pittman participated in the Bullseye Division. Jackson qualified for the open championship, shooting a personal best of 282 out of 300. He is currently ranked eighth in the state for IBO and 3D and 14th in the state for Bullseye. While Elizabeth missed the cut by one point, she ended up being in the top 14% of 2,400 female archers. She's currently 14th in the state for Bullseye, 27th in the state for IBO, and I can't wait for next year. During her stay in Louisville, the archers put together swag bags that included Lex 2 highlighters, hand sanitizer, and pens, thank you Kevin Smoke, as well as handwritten notes of encouragement. They gave these out to fellow archers from around the Eastern Division. These were very welcomed by the receivers. They were also part of history for both the NAS IBO and NAS Bullseye programs. Each program had the largest number of participants ever. There were over 6,400 IBO 3D archers, 14,000 Bullseye archers from 33 states, making it the world's largest archery tournament. Again, we want to thank you for the opportunity to allow the students to experience archery and to be able to carry their experience and their lessons to the highest level. Archery is a sport that can be carried out by anyone, no matter what physicality. Not only does archery help with patience, it helps them build self-confidence and self-control. We could not help these students successfully grow in the program without your support, the support of our administration at the respective schools, and more importantly, the support and trust from our parents. We appreciate the opportunity to share the experiences that can benefit our students, not only on the archery range, but in real life as well. Thank you very much.
I'm, excuse me, I am now excited to have some of our high school leaders come to the podium to talk about the achievements of both our Airport and Brooklyn Casey Student Councils this year. Come on up.
I think they're working their way.
Working their way up, okay. Welcome.
Oh, this is a little too high. Good evening. My name is Ms. Martinez, and I am the Student Government Advisor at Airport High School. Over the last couple of years, I had the privilege of teaching and being part of the family of Airport High School. It was during the first trick-or-treat lane when I realized how amazing Airport High School was. Last year was an amazing experience working with the seniors, and I was super excited to lead such an amazing group of students. This year, the students made such a big impact on the school and its community, and I am extremely proud of them. I had the privilege to see them not only to grow academically, but as leaders of my future, or their future. And now, let me formally introduce some of the officers who will be sharing more of the events that took place this year. Ms. Emily Kaiser, Student Body President, Ms. Cindy Hanna, Student Body Historian, and Breanna White.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Hanna, and I had the honor of serving as the Student Body Historian over the last year. Airport Student Government has worked harder than ever rebuilding what Airport was like before the pandemic. We have not been able to have this many events since 2019, but thanks to these dedicated students, we pulled off a school year filled with excitement. We welcomed the freshmen in with chaos by introducing them to Homecoming Week, where we filled our school with banners and decorations all tied around ancient Greece. We pleased the administration with our enthusiasm that we were even able to bring back Peck Brailleys in support of our clubs at Airport. Then we welcomed over 1,500 kids and parents into our school at our annual trick-or-treat lane. With all the hard work, we were even able to fill up our charity drive calendar, fitting over 35 events into one week to raise money towards camp chemo. There were many, many, many more events that helped raise our council, give back to the community, thanked our teachers, and of course, brought in some fun for our students.
My name is Bree White, and I will be the Student Body President for the 2023-2024 school year. Over the last six years, the Airport Student Government has been recognized as National Gold Council by, of excellence by the National Student Council. This year, we worked hard to provide service, spirit, and leadership to Airport and the community in order to keep holding this title. A council who was awarded at the gold level has demonstrated the highest level of leadership. Each and every one of our members have helped play a part in this legacy, which we have shown by hosting our 20th Year of Charity Drive, raising almost $20,000 this year. This event has been very special to us, and we have raised over $600,000 for camp chemo over the last 29 years. I am more proud to continue this honor as a Gold Council for the 2023-2024 school year. Thank you.
My name is Emily Kaiser, and I'm happy to have represented Airport as the Student Body President this year. The past two years, Airport Student Government has experienced immense changes. With new administration, new advisors, and new students, we have had to work extra hard. Our council has been in charge of teaching advisors and administrators what all Airport Student Government has to offer, but also to please the student body in efforts to improve our school. So continuing, continuing the legacy of winning National Council of Excellence and Gold has showed our resilience through changes. I am more than proud of my council and advisor for having the privilege to help lead at Airport High School. Thanks to the students, teachers, and of course, our office and administration, we were able to provide an amazing school year. Lastly, I would like to thank our principal, Mr. Schillit. We could not have done this without him. He gave us positivity and motivation, but most importantly, the support to properly execute all our school activities. Thank you for allowing Airport to have this opportunity to serve our students, staff, and community. As a future Airport alumni, I will continue to be the leader I learned how to be at my time at Airport High School.
Good evening, and thank you for having us. We are a portion of the, y'all move into the square so people can see you online. A portion of the Brooklyn Casey High School Student Council. We are also hosting our Honor Society induction ceremony this evening, so a majority of our Student Council members are there for that, but we have these lovely people here to speak with all of you. I am Ryan Venomen. For those of you that don't know me, I have the amazing and unique opportunity to serve as the Student Council Advisor and the math teacher, a math teacher at Brooklyn Casey High School. I served as a Student Body President at Brooklyn Casey High School in 2015, so the Student Council holds a very special place in my heart. And I do everything in my power every day to grow student leaders because I feel like they are the people that will be leading us one day very soon. So I'm going to introduce you. I have here and let them speak to you a little bit about what we've accomplished this year. We have Mr. Paxton Mergo. He will be our Student Body Vice President next school year. He currently serves as the sophomore class vice president. We have Mr. John Mower. He is our junior class president. Elliot Bridges, she serves as our freshman class president, and Jessica Padraza, who serves as our junior class vice president. So they will now share a little bit about Brooklyn Casey Student Council with you.
Good evening. My name's Paxton Mergo, as you said. I will be serving as the Student Body Vice President next year. This year was filled with many activities and a ton of memories. This fall, our Student Body President, my brother Parker Mergo, invited Cindy Hips to our school to speak out to student body about the dangers and ratifications of bullying and hazing. Her son Tucker Hips tragically died during a hazing incident at Clemson in 2016. Parker heard Cindy speak at the boys' state and knew that our students knew this message as well. This year, we will also have the unique opportunity to work with all of our elementary schools to open car doors in the morning, welcoming our soon-to-be Bearcats on Tuesday, Tuesday mornings. This was an awesome experience for all of us.
This spring, we held our annual Restock Harvest Hope Food Drive. Unlike other schools who collect canned foods and non-perishables at the holidays, we make it our mission to ensure that Harvest Hope is restocked after the holiday season. To continue serving families in need, we collected over 2,000 non-perishable items and helped Harvest Hope load their trucks when they arrived. They were extremely thankful.
We also hosted our annual Mr. Bearcat Pageant on April 22nd. Contestants participate and choose a charity for which they'd like to raise money for. We raised money before the show and during intermission. Once we calculate who has raised the most money, we donate all money raised to that charity. This year, we donated a little over $1,000 to the South Carolina ASPCA. Our 2023 Bearcat was Mr. Ty Marshall.
Being part of our Student Council is a unique and unforgettable experience. It has given us all countless opportunities at the high school level to serve, to serve our
And we appreciate your service. Now, Lexington 2 has 36 high school students who qualified for the South Carolina Seal of Bile literacy, an award from the South Carolina Department of Education that recognizes students who have attained proficiency in English and another language by graduation. Denise Quickle is going to tell us a bit about these Airport and Brooklyn Casey students, some of whom are with us here tonight.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. I'm very excited to share this information tonight. And I want to give you a little bit of background information. This is no easy accomplishment. We had 36 students this year. We had 34 last year. Would love to see that number grow. And as we work through our world language program and some goals that we have, I know that this number is gonna continue to grow. I do want to recognize, we have about 11 students with us tonight, but I do think I need to share that there are some students who were not able to join us because they are being recognized for National Honor Society at the same time. So we will recognize them, but they were wanting to make sure that we shared the reason for their absence. So we're gonna start. The Seal of Bile literacy is kind of like the Olympics. You can earn a score of an intermediate mid, which is like bronze, and an intermediate high proficiency score is silver, and then if you get an advanced low, you get the highest award, which is considered gold. You have an opportunity to take this assessment your junior and your senior year. So if a student is a junior, and they take it this year and they get a silver, they can take it next year, trying to aim for that, for that gold. So as we said, the criteria for this award is that they must have a minimum proficiency in their English class of at least a 3.0. If not their English class, then it has to be on the WIDA access assessment of a 4.0 or higher. So we do have some of our second language learners that have achieved this award, but all of our students, kudos to our ELA department, have earned this off of their ELA GPA. So, and, and most of that in AP classes, so just very successful. We are going to start, and I kind of have it differentiated by schools, but we're gonna start with recognizing our students who have earned the bronze award. And again, I'm gonna call their names even if they're not here, just because I want to give them the recognition that they deserve. And we are going to start. If you are here and you hear your name, please come up and join us. You will get your certificate, and if you'll please stay, because we'd love to grab a picture when we finish calling out names. Okay, here we go. For bronze, we have Angelina Hernandez Pernia. Isidra Lisette Perez. Mark Ritchie. These are Airport students, by the way. We have Abigail Santa Maria, Briscida Vasquez, and Grayson Whitaker. Those students earned bronze for Spanish. The next group of students earning bronze will be students who have earned the Seal of Bile literacy in Latin, starting with Sidney Artlip from of Bilinguality in Latin, starting with Sydney Artlip from BC High School. And then we have Kinley Casella. Riley Moore. Ryan Springs. And Mason Stowers. Congratulations to our students that earned bronze. If you'll just stay with me. Next, we have a group of students that have earned silver. And we will have in this group, students who've earned silver in the languages of Spanish, Polish, Chinese, and German. And those students are as follows. Dayanara Arreano. And we mentioned him earlier, but Jacob Kaminsky is back again with a higher score in Polish than he received last year, and has added German. So he's received the Seal of Bilinguality in two languages. So he is triliterate. Great job. That's awesome. We have Mylin Mesa. Luis Morroyoki. Did I say that correctly? Martir Munoz Fernandez. Juan Pelayo Velasco. Yadielis Rivera. Zunaida Solis Miravete. Monica Ujoa Fajardo. Amber Laura Lopez. Naomi Martinez Juarez. Zoe Parton. Josue Soriano Cruz. Laura Rubio Reyes. Aziri Torres Castañón. And Isis Yasmin Urecia Arreano. That is our list of silver. Great. Now we have seven students who've earned gold, so we're excited about that. Starting with our students from Airport High School, we have Brianna Cruz and Melissa Mar Morales earning gold from Airport. And from BC High School, we have Brian Alvarenga. We have Maximus Alejandro Fernandez Nunez. Juana Flores. Gladys, Gladys Mayja. And Angelie Michelle Ramirez Martinez. Thank you. And if you would allow me one opportunity to get a picture of these students. And I'd also like to take just a very quick moment, there's, some of their teachers are here, and I, I don't know, I've seen some of them, but our world language teachers in the district are Lydia Schumpert, Amelia Thomas, Kathleen Ross, Reagan King, Evangeline Reddick, Andrew Connolly, Odalise Martinez Cruz, and Noemi Rosales. And if you're here, please come up and celebrate with our kiddos. Thank you so much.
And if y'all can help her out, you can make like three rows for the picture.
I'll be very quick, I'm so sorry. Perfect. There, okay. Yes, okay. One, two, three. Perfect. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Next, I am so excited to share news about two of our Lexington Two teachers who have received awards related to business and finance. One award was given to Dr. Harmonica Hart of New Bridge Academy, and another to Joyce Conyers of Brooklyn KC High School. We're going to hear about both awards now, and I understand that one even includes a check presentation tonight, so let's come on up and celebrate.
As the principal of New Bridge Academy, I would like to introduce you to one of our outstanding educators, Dr. Harmonica Hart. Dr. Hart goes above and beyond with her students, especially in the area of economics and financial literacy. She connects with the students and empowers them to make smart choices. Dr. Hart is a graduate of the South Carolina Financial Literacy Master Teacher Program, where she earned incentives to promote financial literacy and is still doing this great work without the incentives. She has led several students to win first place in the South Carolina Council on Economics, Education, Invest Right Essay Contest, and now it's her time to be recognized as a lead educator in economics and financial literacy. Dr. Harmonica Hart is South Carolina Council on Economics Education, South Carolina Economics Teacher of the Year.
Thank you, Doc, thank you, Ms. Nade. I appreciate you. This came to me as a huge surprise. I was honored, and I gave thanks to my students who did most of the work. I have no words to say. I just worked. And I remember a quote that a teacher is anyone that has received a degree in education, a teaching certificate, but that does not make that person a teacher. What makes a good teacher is one who is dedicated and hardworking. I am what I am, not yet a great teacher, and I thank South Carolina Economics Council for giving me the opportunity to use the information they have provided to become that teacher. Thank you for recognizing me this evening.
Yes, we're the ones with the check.
So I'm going to have Ms. Conyers come forward. We are, we are honored to introduce Ms. Joyce Conyers from Brooklyn KC High School. She's our business teacher, and she's also our department chair, and tonight, she's being recognized from the Palmetto Citizens Federal Credit Union Youth Financial Educator of the Year. Just a couple of things about Ms. Conyers. She has been at Brooklyn KC High School as a business teacher for twenty-eight years. She received her bachelor's and master's degree from the University of South Carolina, and will complete her doctoral degree in education leadership from Arkansas State University this summer. I'm now going to turn it over to Emily Lewis and Casey Cathill.
Hello. I'm Emily Lewis from Palmetto Citizens. Palmetto Citizens was started by teachers, so teachers have a special place in our heart. We actually wouldn't have a job if it wasn't for teachers, so you have a very special place in our heart. We cover eight counties, but we only have one Financial Educator of the Year, and this year, we are so proud, that is Ms. Joyce Connors. We have a check and then also an award for Ms. Connors. You make a difference in your students' lives and actually bring finances to the front of their education, and we really appreciate the difference you make. So thank you, and congratulations. Yeah.
Can we get one of the files? Yeah.
You got to share the check with us?
Put your hand on that check. I'll share this one.
I can hold this one, thank you.
Thank you. Nice, thank you. Finally, some of you have heard me talk about the induction and mentor celebration that we had last month, and what an uplifting experience it was, hearing teachers talk about the bonds that they have forged with each other and their schools, and the positive effects of these relationships, and the, the positive effects of the relationships on their children. District Mentor Coach Philip Raven is going to talk with us about our Lexington Two Rookie Teachers of the Year.
Thank you, Dr. Hafner, and thank you, school board. We appreciate what y'all do for us every day. Tonight, I want to honor and recognize teachers who we've actually already celebrated, but we're going to continue celebrating them. We've got two of them here with us, but this year, about three weeks ago, we recognized our top four Rookie Teachers of the Year. We had an early childhood Rookie Teacher of the Year in elementary, middle, and high school. So not with us tonight, representing the, the early childhood award from KC Elementary, is Ms. Casey Corbett. She's a 5K DD teacher, and she started with us last January, so she's actually almost a veteran. She's, she's now like three semesters in, so we're very proud of her. And also, not with us tonight, but we do want to recognize for her hard work and dedication at the high school level, Ms. Erin Nealan. I'm sorry, Ms. Erin Nealan, I should say. Ms. Nealan teaches at Airport High School, and she teaches English III and IV, and she has some dynamic lessons this year and, and very engaging with her students. And so we're, we're very proud of both of those teachers for their work. With us tonight, we also have two teachers we would like to recognize. So y'all can come on up to the podium. On my far left is Ms. Sarah Godsy. She is our elementary Rookie Teacher of the Year. She teaches fourth grade Language Arts and Social Studies at Riverbank Elementary School. So she's got two blocks of each one, and so she's doing the two prep classes, but she has some great work, and she actually got involved, we recognized our, our Bilinguality Award winners earlier, but she got involved in some PSYOP training going into her, her rookie year. So she actually did some training with Ms. Quickle this summer and has some great outcomes in her classroom. So we're very proud of her and the work that she did with her students. And, and also, at this time, I'd like to recognize our middle school Rookie Teacher of the Year, who was selected as our district Rookie Teacher of the Year. And this is Ms. Kendall Branton, and she is a teacher at Fulmer Middle School. She teaches seventh grade math, and with the seventh grade math, she also teaches a pre-algebra class in there, so we're very proud of them. And we could not have done this without the board's support. The, the mentoring program that's in place in Lexington Two is effective, and these teachers are really living testimonies of the hard work and dedication that, that the mentors put in with them. But they were highly motivated, and they did some amazing things with their students, building relationships with families and building community within the school. So we are proud, and I've asked them if they wanted to speak, they're welcome to. They're usually talking to middle schoolers and elementary school students, so it's a little different, but we do want to go ahead and, and recognize them. So we'll let them speak, and then we'll give everybody a big round of applause.
Hello, everyone. I'm Sarah Godsy. I have the pleasure of teaching fourth grade ELA and Social Studies at Riverbank Elementary. I don't know if you guys know, but I also did my student teaching there, so I'm proud that I learned what I know there, and I've continued to grow there. I just could not do this without the amazing people at Riverbank. They have helped me grow this year. My mentor was Ms. Kendall Skelton, who is the STEM coach at Riverbank, and she is wonderful. She was a great help. I also want to thank Mr. Brantley, who was my student principal, and Mr. Sims, of course, he's the principal. I also had an amazing partner teacher, who was also my, one of my coaching teachers last year, Ms. Jennifer Brooks. So she teaches math and science. She's kind of the other half to my whole, so I really appreciate her. And my other coaching teacher actually is here tonight, Ms. Chelsea Billings, and she is awesome, too. So I just am so proud to, to not only have done my student teaching at Riverbank, but also to have taught my first year there. I'm excited to go back next year and see how I can grow. So thank you so much to everyone that allowed me to get this award, and thank you to the board for recognizing me tonight. My students also, and I know I'm talking too much, I do that a lot, but I went back the next day, and I told my students, I showed them my award, and I was like, I couldn't have done this without you, and they don't know, but I'm surprising them with a pizza party, because I'm so, I feel like truly, like I couldn't have done it without them, and they've just helped me so much, and I've learned so much, and I love all of them. So if any of them are watching, hello, I love you all. Okay, go ahead, Kendall.
Hey, I'm Kendall Branton, and it has been an honor and a joy to get to spend this past year at Fulmer Middle School in the seventh grade math world. I just have to shout out, my mentor teacher has been L.K. Stewart, who also was my co, like, other part of me, the other side of the math world in seventh grade, and I just would not be where I am without her, and that is a reflection of just the math department as a whole. So Ms. Wise, thank you so much for everything that you do for us, and it has just been a joy to be able to work for a district that is champions for children, and that encourages us to like, remember our heart behind, like, why are we here? And how did we get here? And would we not forget those that led us here? So I just wanted to thank you all for serving on the board and being a part of my wife, why I get up every day and do what I do every day, and it's been an honor to be named District Rookie Teacher of the Year. Thank you all so much.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Raven, and I want to tell you all, the joy that you just felt right there with those two young ladies, that, that afternoon, this room was filled with so much appreciation and honor and admiration for one another and their mentor teachers and their principals and their schools, and it just, it was a, just a love fest. We all had a very enjoyable afternoon and snuck Kendall's family in, and so that was a great surprise, and I just encourage you all to reach out and say hello to our induction teachers if you can before the year's over, and tell them congratulations. Thank you. And thank you, everyone who came out tonight, so that we could recognize you and your accomplishments. You make us all very proud in Lexington Two.
Thank you, Dr. Hafner, and now we will move on to item five, public participation. Ms. Kiava, did we have any people sign up for public participation? Okay, thank you very much. Now we'll move right along, back to you, Dr. Hafner, for administrative divisional reports, legislative update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. They've been very busy over at the State House, but I just wanted to give you some updates from this week. The House did vote one hundred and eleven to three Wednesday to non-concur with the Senate amendments to the bill enacting the South Carolina Transparency and Integrity in Education Act, that's H. three-seven-two-eight, also referred to as the anti-critical race theory legislation. The bill now heads back to the Senate, which will likely insist upon its amendments and call for the appointment of a conference committee to work out the differences between the House version of the bill and the Senate version of the bill. The Senate is scheduled to return, excuse me, the Senate is scheduled to return to session at noon Tuesday. In other action, the following acts were ratified and sent to the governor as follows. S. point-two-eight-four expands the use of revenue from local accommodations taxes to develop workforce housing under certain conditions, which could include housing for educators, that's why it's so relevant for us. And then H. point-three-seven-two-six enacts the statewide Education and Workforce Development Act to create the statewide workforce development office and transfers the coordinating council for workforce development, which includes K-12 functions to that office. The conference committee carried over the following provisos earlier this week. The House version of Proviso one-point-five-oh that clarifies that South Carolina High School League is authorized to make adjustments to school athletic competition levels to promote competitive balance. The Senate version of Proviso one-point-one-oh-four that mandates school districts and schools to accept cash as a payment option for admission to extracurricular activities. The Senate version of Proviso one-point-one-oh-two that prohibits districts and schools from using any devices purchased or leased by the district or school to access TikTok. And then finally, the conference committee for the state budget did not meet Wednesday, but was planning to convene today at eleven, and I assume that they did so. I cannot confirm nor deny. And this concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, and I think next we have our Performing Arts Center update.
That's right. If I could invite Mr. LeBlanc up to the podium, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Hafner, members of the board. I'm excited to share my May update of the L-2 PAC in Fine Arts Programming in Lexington Two. I hope the public can take a look and see a picture on the right from last month's presentation when we had our topping-out ceremony, and just see the picture on the left, how far we've come in such a short time. So it's really coming together. It's looking awesome. Few things we've been up to. The first bullet point up here is what I'm probably most excited for out of the past month, having the opportunity to share the PAC with some of our own teachers that have helped lead work in our district in the arts. We were able to give a tour last Friday to all of the, the department heads that have helped us in cohorts and with our strategic plan. Mr. Robinson showed them the whole thing. You can see on the right, they even got to go on the roof and see just the magnitude of the project. You can see clear across the Lexington Medical Center downtown Columbia, and inside the actual auditor- we've come in such a short time. So it's really coming together. It's looking awesome. A few things we've been up to. The first bullet point up here is what I'm probably most excited for out of the past month. Having the opportunity to share the PAC with some of our own teachers that have helped lead work in our district in the arts. We were able to give a tour last Friday to all of the department heads that have helped us in cohorts and with our strategic plan. Mr. Robinson showed them the whole thing. You can see on the right, they even got to go on the roof and see just the magnitude of the project. You can see clear across the Lexington Medical Center downtown Columbia. And inside the actual auditorium, I mean mouths were dropped the entire time. They were just so excited, Dr. Hafner, Mr. Chapman, many of the cabinet members were joining us on this tour. Just so much excitement from them and they were able to go back and share that with their departments, which we are eagerly awaiting being able to give more and more tours as we get a little further in the construction progress. Also, we've worked, I've worked to draft the first rental guide for the L-2 PAC, the Joint Arts Administrators Institute. I came from that today. It's been a two-day institute with other arts directors and principals of art schools by the Fine Arts Center in Greenville, Governor's School, et cetera, across our whole state for professional development and great networking opportunity. We've had so many people reach out about renting the PAC this month. We have quite a long list of potential renters, so it's getting quite lengthy, as well as people from our district that are looking to rent it in the spring of 2024. Hopefully you had an opportunity to see the high school district art show. Our students just have so much talent and they filled our district office with lots of artwork. Continue to do construction updates and construction meetings. Hopefully you received our stakeholder survey. Within 24 hours, we already had 300 entries. So if that doesn't tell you the excitement and people really wanting an opportunity to have input, I don't know what will, but I have quite a bit that I get to sniff through over the next few weeks and I'm excited to do that. Our team finished up our strategic plan, a final review. They are working on last opportunities to comment right now. I've attached my Fine Arts newsletter, the first one that we've done specifically for fine arts, and that's directed primarily to our teachers. And in that, I just introduced the research that USC's Darlemore School Business did on the impact of arts to our economy, just to give another lens of why it's so important that we introduce our kids at a young age and they can see the true impact that it has. Our, the State Department, Roger Simpson, is doing a standards review, so many of our faculty members will start working on that and we'll be working on that throughout the entire next school year, reviewing all of the fine arts standards for our state. And then of course, another opportunity to see the last events that we have as far as fine arts go. A few connections this month. If you don't know the name Larry Hembray, he is Mr. Theater in South Carolina. He was in charge of children's theater, trust is, Nickelodeon Theater. He still works in many areas of theater. I've met with him a number of times since January, but he's so thrilled for our district to have this opportunity and is open arms to help in any way that we need. I've talked a lot with him about potential partnerships that our students can benefit from and he's just hit the ground running with ideas. Another one, William Stare from over at Columbia City Ballet. He is just such a gracious and generous human being, but in the world of dance in South Carolina, he is the man. And when he was a dancer himself and received bronze rating at the Grand Prix, all the way to starting the only professional dance company in South Carolina in Columbia City Ballet. I met with him earlier this week on Monday and we discussed partnerships and potential ways that his ballet can support the students of Lexington 2. And looking forward to providing many more opportunities than just going across the Cogurt Center and seeing a ballet or Frosty Snowman or something like that, but truly being able to learn from professionals. He has 30 professional dancers on staff all year long. And a neat tidbit, the four best dancers in the United States are all from the Midlands of South Carolina. Both the two, in, the two companies in New York, in Houston, and out west in San Francisco are all from right here in the Midlands. So our students have quite the opportunity with instructors and talent that's out here. On and on with great people, but I really want to point out the third from last, Ann Reamer. She presented at our Joint Arts Administrators Institute and did a fantastic job showing what our students in Lexington 2 have the opportunity to do when they come here to this facility. So I wanted to give her a shout out. She did a really good job. All right. And Mr. Atkins, do you want to pull the other slide real quick? We already had the honors and recognition portion, but I wanted to make sure we recognize some of our artists in Lexington 2 as we've concluded our competition season. So from solo and ensemble competitions, Brooklyn KC High Superior Honor Choir, solists were Lucy Berry, Riley Myers, Lauren Waters, Quena Reras, Ian Barnes, and Callie Burgess. From Busby Orchestra, Superior Rating, Micah Simmons. Orchestra Excellent Rating, Aiden Britton. From Northside Superior, Bryce Lowry. Snare solo was our, he did snare solo. Arwin Simmons did clarinet solo. Bentley Tideman trombone solo, an excellent ratings, Bryce Lowry also timpani solo. Pine Ridge Middle, Abigail Murillo, Sofia Hernandez de Legas, Haradania Lopez Loa, Luna Gonzalez, and Brianna Moscoso Palias. They did a mixed quintet and earned a superior rating. Excellent rating, Kalen Sly was a flute solo. And as a mixed duet, we had Harmony Kearns Benjamin and Abigail Murillo. Concert performance assessment, that's the CPA. Airport High School, Superior Chorus, Namaya Carey, Natalie Tenorio Gonzalez, Emily Anderson, Madison Echmalian, Terzad Graham, Brian, Peyton Jones, Alicia Brown, Timothy Weston, Jalissa Conyers, Mary Higgins, Jania Howell, Talisha Jones, Michael Hatchell, Landon Allison, Abigail Beveridge, Leah Conrad, Bridget, Penegua Legor, and Tara Isbell. From Busby Creative Arts Academy, overall superior rating, the academy wins. There were two superiors and an excellent performance, two superiors in site reading. And then from the VPAC, Superior 7th Grade VPAC Theater Group, J. Coker, McKenna Maddox, Ashley Martinez, Yorosa Savannah Smith. And Superior 8th Grade Theater Group, Lillian Atkins, Abigail Mae Brown, Thomas Hilton, Daryl Hugh G., Jamila Mohammed, Micah Simmons, Yason, Sante Velazquez, and Chloe Welsh. Superior 7th Grade Solo Acting, Zayla Lambert. And 7th Grade Solo Excellent, Jay Sean Moore. And then Saluda River Academy for the Arts, we hosted the South Carolina Theater Association's Youth Festival and the Bobcat Players earned a superior rating. And Bobcat Players instructor, Ms. Walker's in the audience. Congratulations, yes. Let's give them all a big round of applause. And Mr. Atkins, if you'll head to the other. And to conclude, just wanted to show a few pictures of what was happening around our district in the last month. You can see the Busby Band here at Carowinds for their performance. Our Middle School Orchestra from last week. This is a couple of pictures from the Theater Festival. As you can see, it's really grown in our state. We have tons of vendors now that come from all over the state, as well as theater groups in the elementary level. One thing that I've said from the beginning that is important is providing access to students of all ages to the arts. The BC Drum Line visited Saluda River and now we have about 340 students that want to play drums. But they're pretty fantastic if you get a chance to listen. A few more. Couple more from our tour. You can see the inside, how it's coming along. Looks a lot different with paint on the stage. I'm not sure if y'all have had an opportunity to get by there. This is our group that we toured last Friday with teachers from across the district. And then, thank you. Mr. Atkins, will you hit the play button for me?
This is a fantastic opportunity for all of our students, this Lexington 2 Performing Arts Center, because not every student at every school has access to arts programs. And so being able to come together and do things as a district is going to be monumental.
Yeah, and I'm really excited about all of the hands-on opportunities this affords our students. They're going to be able to experiment with all the technical and design elements and also performing at the center.
And leads them to professional experience that they wouldn't get elsewhere.
We say thank you to all the people who have supported the arts programs in Lexington 2 and this huge investment for our students and our community.
Super excited.
They really were super excited. So that concludes my update this month. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Bray.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Dr. Hafner, so far we're about halfway through the contingency. Now that most of all the mechanicals and electrical and major structures are done, when do we expect to hear kind of a second what the burn plan is for the rest of that contingency?
We do have a list, Mr. Bray, of outstanding items that we may want to consider as we head into the final stages of the billing process, but we want to make sure that we've taken care of all the have-tos before we hit on the wants.
Thank you, ma'am. Next one up is something we sent earlier, but just wanted to kind of put out there. There seems to be a bit of spillage of floor plan usage from the DEC over into rooms that could be in the PAC. And I just want to kind of put it out there, at least from this board member's perspective. I would love to see any room that's going to be in that big old building stay for the PAC side, so that as we move potentially other programs in there, that it's solely kid-focused and not district office sliding into there. Thanks for the tour. That is awesome. Uh, you know, I may have been asking for that for a while and it was exciting to see all the excitement. And I think we're going to have another one here soon, so I highly appreciate that. And then to end on a note that will probably hit, I'm assuming in August or September when we get to that set of policies, but I would love, this board member would love to see that anytime we have any type of performance that is open to the public, that we make sure it's G-rated. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bray. Any other questions or comments? Thank you so much. Wonderful presentation tonight. We're definitely getting excited about the arts. And you can see, we wouldn't be winning all these awards already if we didn't already have some really fine arts educators in our district. So good shout out to all of them and the great work they're doing with our children. All right, Dr. Hafner, on to finance. Turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You have the financial reports before you this evening. Are there any questions from trustees?
Board members, any questions on the finance reports? Okay, then we're going to move right along. I'm sorry. Ms. Rucker, I apologize.
No, you're good. No questions. I just wanted to ask for next month if we could add the federal funds report back.
Yes, ma'am.
To the finance reports. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so Dr. Hafner, if you can make a note, add the federal funds report back. Then we're going to move on to human resources. I think, Dr. Cooper, you have the monthly contracted services update.
Yes, just briefly, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Hafner, this snapshot that you see is of course fluid and it was on our post as of last Thursday. It's changed exponentially ebb and flowed. Since that time, you know, it's truly second by second. Be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Board members, any questions about human resources for this report? Yes, Ms. Rucker.
I just wanted to thank you again for this monthly report. I know we were all kind of hesitant with the virtual teachers, but we see we just have one.
Yes, we still have.
So we just thank you for all your hard work in filling positions.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you.
Real quick, do we, thank you. Do we expect to need to carry this into next year as of now? Or the virtual teaching contract as of this moment? Did it end, does it end in this fiscal year?
It does.
Okay, thank you. That's good. That's all I need for now.
It could be that we, that we do have another virtual placement, but it does end at the end of this year. Yes. Welcome.
Okay, thank you very much. And a shout out for those of you who may be watching at home. If you know of any teachers or you're a teacher yourself, please call and contact Dr. Cooper. We have plenty of opportunities to share with you. Next, I think we're going to turn it over to Dr. Brooks for instruction. Dr. Brooks.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Members of the board, Dr. Hafner, we have our two final elementary schools to present to you tonight on our Cognia updates. If they'll start making their way up, we're going to start with KC Elementary. So I'm going to let Mr. Drozdak introduce his group that he has with him as well.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Dr. Brooks. Madam Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Hafner, I'm excited to introduce our instructional leadership team from KC Elementary School before we get into our presentation tonight. I have Amy Tribble, one of our assistant principals, Ashley Calder, another of our assistant principals, Dr. Hawanya Amaker, assistant principal, and our instructional coaches, Dana Hutto, Chelsea Billings, and Paula Miller. We're excited tonight to talk to you about the action steps we have taken as an instructional leadership team in collaboration with our teachers to try and take a systematic approach to differentiation in instruction to increase engagement with our students and hopefully increase learning outcomes. All right, so everybody's going to have a little turn here to talk and we can answer any questions you might have at the end, if that's all right.
Good evening. I'm Ashley Calder, one of the assistant principals. So during our collaborative times, we gave teachers the expectations to form groups across their grade level based on different assessment results.
And this process allowed for more student engagement by ensuring that instruction was differentiated and data-driven, as you can see by the groups. A little short, that's okay.
On this chart, you'll see just a way that one grade level decided to use their win time, that's what I need time, to address the needs of each of the students that they identified. Now keep in mind that our grade levels are very large, okay? But these teachers use their collective efficacy to think about what would serve each child best with their reading levels. So what they did is they took the entire grade level, thought about them, their students as readers, looked at their assessments, what they needed, and then they thought about what each teacher really was the best at and how they could move those students forward. And this is just an example of that grouping. Chelsea, you want to add anything to that?
Sure. Um, this is a first grade group and so we know that as emergent readers, that level, that level-based instruction is so important. And so if we go to the next slide, this is a different grade level. This is second grade. And so they determined that they would separate their groups a little bit differently and they looked at the components of literacy and separated their groups that way. They knew that some of the struggles their students were having was in decoding. However, some students were struggling with fluency. And so together with the grade level teachers and the coaches there for support, we came up with a menu of lessons. And this is going to be incredibly helpful for us next year as we implement the Skeleton Plans and continue to work through those, because teachers are going to have opportunities to pick and choose lessons that are right for their students, but also align with our essential standards and our Skeleton Plans.
This is an example from one of our kindergarten collaborative planning meetings. And with each assessment, pre-assessment, and any formative assessments that they give, this grade level likes to categorize in different groups, excelling, achieving, progressing, and beginning. They collaborate as a team and calibrate their scoring in order to group students. And then they go through the assessments and decide what were strengths of each of those categories and what were areas of growth. And then from that, the conversation comes into collaboration around what strategies they're going to use to target each group to really help excel to that next level. So it really helps with that growth mindset and to engage our students on the level that they're at, meet them where they are, and push them to that next level.
Okay, in an effort to be more proactive and be able to hit the ground running for the next school year, we worked together with our Solution Tree Coach, our teachers, the coaches, and administrators to create this win proficiency map for the 23-24 school year for both ELA and math. The win proficiency map includes a week-by-week plan that includes the district tier-one focus as well as identified tier-two and tier-three focuses as well. The beginning-of-the-year tier-two and tier-three focus is based on essential standards that have historically been areas of growth for KC. We embedded time to teach procedures and expectations alongside content in order to create an authentic experience while not losing valuable beginning-of-the-year instructional time. We've also identified, had this current year's teachers identify possible tier-two and tier-three students, so that when their 23-24 school year teachers get those kids, they know from the very beginning what are some things that they need to work on for tier-two and tier-three instruction. We also have planned to begin sharing kids, as you noticed earlier from one of the slides, by September the 18th.
All right, we'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Excellent presentation. We appreciate everything y'all are doing for our students at KC Elementary School and thank you so very much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Y'all have a great night.
All right, Springdale's up. All right, Springdale's up next. Annette Ariel and her team. And Annette, I'll let you introduce everyone.
Lower the mic. I'm a little bit shorter. Good evening, everybody. How are y'all doing? We're excited to be here tonight to present about the great things our instructional staff and our teachers are doing at Springdale. I'm Annette Ariel, the principal. I've got with me Melanie Yoder, my assistant principal, Deion Loudon, my reading coach, and Ms. Kristin Davis, my STEM coach. So if you'll notice for, do I have a clicker? There we go. Nope, too far. There we go. Sorry. So these are our goals for the year. We started with looking at our PLC process and making sure that we were implementing it school-wide. Then we looked at the percentage of students in meets and exceeds for math and that that was dropping throughout the district. So we wanted to do some specific targeted interventions for those friends. And that led us to our third goal with making sure that our stakeholders felt like the teachers had an opportunity to get to know their students and then that our instruction reflected that. So my team is going to talk about things we did to make sure that our community members knew that we know their students personally and academically.
So one way that we, if you'll flip to the next slide or I can click it. There we go. So one way that we decided to reach out to our parents at our school is through some pod cards. And we have this cute little dolphin stationery that's got our dolphin dive characteristics on it. We passed them out to teachers during our PLC data team meeting time. And we gave them an opportunity to write a note to a student for something that they've been doing successfully in school. And they took that home to their parents. And one thing that Ms. Ariel and I did was we took the handwritten notes once teachers wrote them. And we took, we went together to each class and we pulled them into the hallways. And we celebrated with them, all the great things that they're doing. We took a picture with them and we posted it on social media. And we also know that these pieces of paper get stuffed in that book bag, in that folder, and then they never come out and the parents never get to see them. So we sent them a dojo message along with a picture just to celebrate them. So the parents got the message, they got to celebrate with them when they got home. And to see their faces when they knew that they were picked and that they were special and that they were doing what they're supposed to was just glowing for all of us. So we all celebrated together. So that was one way that we have really reached out to the community and shown everybody and build that rapport, that positivity. And so what we've done is we have written you guys a note and we are spreading the love. And you get to see a little bit about what we have done at Springdale this year. And if you'll click to the next slide, here are some of those sweet faces with those notes and then just a variety of all the notes that we have sent home this year. So this has been a huge thing for us, just seeing how happy they've been. And this is an example I brought that was on my desk that said, it reads, "I'm so proud of how eager you are to read lately. I see how much you have grown as a reader and it makes me so happy. Keep practicing. Love, Ms. Harrelson." And she's one of our reading interventionists. So just an example of something we've been doing. And I'm going to pass it on to Ms. Loudon. Yeah.
Good evening. So the second action step that we took was making sure that Ms. Davis and I, she's the STEM coach and I'm the reading coach, that we really coached into teacher intervention blocks. And we did that, did this to support the second part, well, the first and second part of the goal, to support differentiation so individual learning needs are met. We were using the reflection data from the TACA form. And we did coaching in ELA intervention and coaching in math intervention. We coached all grades, all teachers. We used the data from that reflection section of the TACA form which asks which students still needed intervention, what was a specific part of the essential standard that still needed reteaching, which students had already met the standard and gone beyond. And we planned with those teachers and pushed into their intervention blocks to support them. In ELA, we also used data from conferring and running records and writing samples. And then we were able to pull groups together and provide small group instruction. Ms. Davis and I did a lot of modeling and co-teaching, gradually releasing the class back over to the teachers and then we gave them support. And then we focused on things like building phonemic awareness, studying spelling patterns, building vocabulary, using multisensory approach, using lots of manipulatives. And we saw a lot of improvement in just teaching in general in the intervention block.
Okay, so in January and March, we had a focus on our intervention. So we decided to host a PD sharing with teachers what tier-two intervention should look like during that intervention time. We also shared with teachers how to use the TACA as a tool when creating small groups for tier-two instruction. And we also provided teachers with sample documents to use to help assist in keeping track of data during intervention. I also took some time and modeled and practiced different small group instructional strategies for students in different grade levels for the teachers. We observed the team. We observed teachers and gathered data on what we noticed during the intervention time. And during our PLT time, we discussed those students that were being pulled during intervention and talked about their growth. As a leadership team, we did notice there was a shift in mastery of the standards. We wanted to push our students just a bit further, so we decided to set a goal for our students and teachers for the spring star. We knew our students were growing, but we wanted to see the change in our data that we were seeing in the classroom. So we based our goal on student SGP. We targeted the growth from the winter star to the spring star. If classes had an average SGP of 50 or more, we had a celebration for them that we're going to host at the end of this year. Since setting the goal, the teachers and students, we have seen an increase with our SGP for ELA as well as math.
That concludes our presentation. Does anyone have any questions for us? All right, thank you all so much.
Any other questions, board members? And thank you for the sweet notes. We love them. You saw us all grinning from ear to ear. So I know the kids love that and also like a handwritten note rather than a text or an email because we're forgetting how to do that sometimes.
Well, the best part was when we go to the classrooms and the students, once they realized it, they would start applauding for the other kids that were going out. They were like, "You're going to get a sticker too!" And so they were very excited about the sticker part as well.
Well, that is awesome. Thank you all. Thank you all so much. Thank you, Dr. Brooks, and we appreciate both of those schools for presenting tonight.
Yep. And Madam Chairman, while our Wood group, moving to our next, if I can, I'm sorry. While our Wood group moves up to the podium, I just want to take a moment to let you know how nervous they get coming and speaking to the board and the public and all the millions of people that are watching. And so I also want to take this time just to acknowledge them because it does take a lot of courage to get up and share what they do normally every day. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Angela Brown. She's going to introduce our teachers and our TACA presentation tonight. We picked second grade at Wood because as we've done our snapshot visits across the district, a common theme that we have seen is about academic vocabulary. And they addressed this as part of theirs. So with that, Ms. Brown?
Absolutely. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Hafner. I have the opportunity to serve Wood Elementary School. I'm not scared of a microphone. So I'm super excited to be here and share with you the wonderful things that we're doing. I have two of my five second grade team members here, Kaylee Ziegler and Tiffany O'Neil. And I'm here for moral support. So they're going to share with you the findings that they had from the most recent TACA.
The TACA we are presenting is from our geometry unit. Students had to be able to identify and draw shapes with specific attributes. Students also had to partition shapes using halves, thirds, and fourths. As a team, we gave our students a pre-assessment on the geometry unit which resulted in a lack of using and understanding vocabulary to identify shapes with specific attributes and the vocabulary of partitioning shapes. This was especially true for our ELL students and non-grade level readers. For direct instruction, we planned activities using certain materials such as creating three-dimensional shapes using toothpicks and marshmallows, creating larger pictures from tangrams, and cutting paper into partitioned shapes. For students who did not master the standard, we worked on drawing the shapes with specific attributes. Then we made connections that supported identifying the shapes using the vocabulary. For example, students were able to draw a shape with four sides and four vertices. Then we supported them in being able to identify that shape as a quadrilateral. In small groups, we used hands-on examples such as geoboards, drawing different shapes, and using and identifying models of three-dimensional shapes. For students in need of enrichment, we focused on partitioning shapes and began connecting that to fractions.
Based on the pre-test data, only 17% of students met the standard. And our team goal was that 70% would master the standard and 30% of students would be able to draw shapes using specific attributes. As a result of this process, we had 61% reach mastery. As you can see, we did not meet our goal, but we had 33% reach approaching, which shows how extremely important the vocabulary is for this unit. For this standard this year, our students were grouped together within our own classrooms based on their needs. However, in order to improve our instruction next year, we will, using the information from this TACA, share our students between our team. We have noticed with previous math standards that this yields better results to meet the needs of every student based on their growth. We will intentionally plan intervention and enrichment groups throughout our team using instructional strategies that we created this year. The TACA process has helped us create an analysis for the standards in both ELA and math so that we have purposeful discussions about our students from the very beginning of next year. Thank you so much.
It absolutely warms my heart to hear the depth of understanding that our teachers are learning. I know that to non-educators, you may not catch as much of the things that the instruction people get and the teachers in this classroom, but I want to point out some huge pieces that they talked about. We talk about SMART goals and a lot of times when we set goals, it's all about theirs was 70%, we're going to hit the standard. And we don't ever think about, okay, well, what about the other 30%? They told you specifically what those 30% of students were going to be able to do. And that is hugely important and a new focus that we had this year as well as moving forward to try and do better with that next year. And then the other thing that I liked is the intentionality of how they're planning to use this next year. Hopefully, the information that they have recorded really will allow them to do that. So kudos. Y'all did an excellent job. All of the, and I don't know that y'all realize this, we don't prep them. I haven't heard what they're going to say. Now, I did get a copy of their script, to be honest, tonight. But all of the groups, we don't tell them what to say. This is not scripted at all. It is truly their words and their lived experiences. And I am hugely proud of all of the work that our schools, our teachers, our kids, our administrators all have done.
Mr. Bray.
Madam Chair. Thank you, ma'am. Kudos to all the schools. Y'all did fantastic. It makes my math brain, because I'm uniliterate, to be able to understand data to it and being able to have data-informed decisions. So that is fantastic. One, it's not a question, but Dr. Brooks, if you would explain for anybody who hops on the board docs and then flips through the 30-plus TACA forms, one of the things that stood out to me, and I asked Dr. Brooks, I had the ability to, and it made a ton of sense once I heard it, which I think would make sense to other people, is if you look between the first formative assessment and then the summative assessments, sometimes we see wonderful growth in most of them. But in some of the areas, we see that the "does not meet" tier grew. And that kind of scared me a little bit until I heard the answer. So if you wouldn't mind going over that for one second, please.
I'll be happy to. And Bernie, if you'll flip back to the one that was up there, Wood, it'll just make it a little bit easier. I'm a visual learner. And so what he's talking about is you'll see the column that says first formative assessment of students. And you can see 31 of them were "does not meet," all the way up to 18 that meets. And what he's talking about is as you look through some of these forms, this one looks good, which is another reason that we selected it, but you see the 31 went to six and the 18 went to 61. But on some of them, it doesn't look like that. And so the question was, why is that? Why are the kids getting worse with their scores? And the answer is, is because this is the first formative assessment. And a lot of times what happens are teachers are not assessing the kids on all of the standards that are going to be assessed on, on that summative one. One of the things that we asked teachers to do at the beginning of the year was to put all of their formatives on here. If you saw that, you would be able to track and they would be able to predict their summative scores. But if you'll remember, we had lots of first semester anxiety over the TACA forms. And so one of the things that we did to help our teachers is we said, please list the first one. If you want to list the other ones, you can, but you don't have to. Let's put the first one and let's put the summative. So that was us trying to give them a little bit of flexibility to make it a little bit better process for them. And hopefully, as you've heard teachers come up and have spoke about it, you can see that they are starting to see value in the work that they put into it. And I've said this all along and I will continue to say it as long as I sit in the seat. This is not easy work, but is hugely important work. And it really does benefit all of our kids when we do it the way we should.
Thank you, Dr. Brooks. And I look forward to, as the years proceed, being able to see this data come together and really make, you know, district-wide, school-wide, grade-wide decisions. So great work. Thank you all.
Any other comments or questions, board members? And thank you again to our teachers from Wood. That was excellent. I know it's nerve-wracking getting up here with us, but we're no scarier than a room full of second graders, right? All right, with that, we're going to move on to operations update. Dr. Hafner.
Yes, Mr. Chapman, I will toss that to you if you have any.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Hafner. I have before you the May 2003 operations report. If you have any questions, myself and Mr. McPherson and Mr. Houser are here to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Board members, any questions on operations today? Okay, well, thank you very much. Then we're going to move right along to our unfinished business. Before we hit that, because I know y'all are just jumping up and down waiting in your seats to hear us talk about policies, I would like to point out to the people watching at home and the people here in our audience that our administration works really hard to give us agendas, working along with the officers, that are very student-focused. And if you look, we basically have just spent about an hour and a half talking about student successes, things we need to work on, what's going on in our classrooms. And I'm really, really proud of the amount of time on our agendas that we actually spend on talking about students and what's going on in the classroom. So I commend the administration for doing that. And obviously, all of our teachers and staff and administrators for coming and sharing the successes and like some of them said, even some of the challenges, but how we're going to learn lessons from them. Okay, board members, again, I'm going to remind the people watching at home and the people here and any public and staff that our board is working very hard to update all of our policies and that our board members are actually spending countless hours at home reviewing word-for-word all of our policies. Mr. Bray and I were outside joking earlier and I think he told me he spent four hours alone preparing this week for the board meeting. So, you know, that's a lot of time that we're taking, but we definitely want to get it right. And this is really important work for us. During this item of unfinished business, of unfinished business meeting, we're going to be asking for second and final reading on policies that passed first reading last month. I remind those of you at home and even here that you can go online to board docs and you can actually pull up everything that you're seeing that's got a little piece of paper by it. And you could actually see the same things that board members are seeing. It's not the days where we had all the notebooks and y'all had to wonder what we were looking at. You can actually pull up at home and follow along if you would like. And if you have any, these are usually posted, you know, at least 24 hours ahead of time. If you feel really passionate about anything you see up there, please feel free to reach out to Dr. Hafner's office or any of the board members and we'll be glad to talk with you about it. With that, we're going to move on. Ms. Kessler, I think we've got item A.
Yes, I make a motion to approve second and final reading for proposed revision to board policy IC school year, ID school day, IHAC, social studies education, IHCA, summer school, IHCD, advanced college placement. Review only on board policy, IHAQ, career transition to work education, no change. Proposed revision to administrative ruling, IHCD-R, advanced college placement.
I have a motion from Ms. Kessler for second and final reading of the policies she listed. Do I have a second? Okay, a second by Ms. Liz Chitty Castles. Okay, a second by Ms. Liz Chitty-Cassels. Board members, any discussion or questions regarding that before we take a final vote? Ms. Rucker has had her hand up.
Madam Chair, I would like to pull Policy ID, School Day, for a separate vote.
Okay, so we're going to, as a friendly amendment, Ms. Kessler, remove ID and consider that separately, because she may want to have some discussion on that. And again, board members, remember, that's the proper procedure I asked to follow at the beginning, that if you want to really discuss something, let's get the bulk passed and then discuss. So thank you, Ms. Rucker. Ms. Bickley, we've removed ID from that motion. All right, any other further discussion about the remaining policies or removal? All right, all those in favor of second and final reading of the policies read by Ms. Kessler with the exception of ID, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. And now, I'll take a motion on ID in a second, and then obviously, your comments, unless you want to make the motion, Ms. Rucker.
Can I make the motion with the proposed changes? Okay. I make a motion to approve Policy ID, School Day, with the following changes: to keep "a minute" instead of the proposed "a moment" as "a minute" is noted in State Statute 59-1-443; and to also add, per State Statute 59-1-455, all schools shall during the course of each school day's activities at a specified time, which be designated by the school, say the Pledge of Allegiance. 59-1-455 would also need to be added to the legal references of the policy as well.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Rucker, and Ms. Bickley.
I can send that to her.
She can send that to you for the minutes. And then a second by Mr. Bray. Board members, any discussion or questions? Okay, and Ms. Rucker did send this to Ms. Kessler and I ahead of time, and we appreciate that. Basically, what she noted is that the actual statute reads "minute," "full minute" instead of "moment," and I think we a lot of times will say "moment of silence," and that might be where the change came from, but the statute actually reads a full minute. And then obviously, she also had the State Statute that talked about the Pledge of Allegiance. We're obviously doing these things in our schools every day, but we want to codify that in Board Policy. So board members, any other questions before we vote on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, and thank you, Ms. Rucker, for that catch.
Madam Chair, point of order. Did we do IHCA, or did we pull that? I didn't hear it in the motion. It was? Okay. Good copy. That's all I need.
Yeah, so, yeah, we have it. Thank you. Thank you for checking, though, Mr. Bray.
It's just, it's not on the unfinished business in this section.
So you said it's on the Board Docs.
Gotcha.
It's on Board Docs.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. It is on Board Docs for those watching at home.
And it's on the motion.
And some of us do have a paper copy. You see us fiddling with that, so that's what Mr. Bray is referring to. Okay, thank you so much, and we're going to move on for Item B, Ms. Kessler.
Motion to approve second and final reading for proposed revision to Board Policy ECB, Buildings and Grounds Maintenance, ED, Materials and Equipment Management, EGAD, Copyright Compliance. Proposed addition of Board Policy EC, Buildings, Grounds, Property Management. Proposed revision to Administrative Rule ED-R, Materials and Equipment Management, EGAD-R, Copyright Compliance.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Kessler, a second by Mr. Bray. Board member, anybody want to pull any of those from consideration?
Madam Chair, I do not want to pull, but I would like Dr. Hafner to note with ECB, when you go to do administrative side to it, we didn't put a month or reporting date for the annual report. I don't think that we need to codify it in a policy, but it's something we probably need to write or expect, at least on the board side, to know when that annual report will be, what month.
Board members, any other questions? Okay, and the only thing is, I myself would like to pull ECB for a second out to discuss, Ms. Kessler, so we're going to consider all of that except for ECB. I have one consideration for a change on that. So Ms. Bickley, strike ECB for right now. And moving forward, second and final reading of all the other proposed policies except for ECB, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. So if somebody wants to make a motion to approve ECB, I'll be glad to bring up my comment.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve Policy ECB.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Bray, second by Ms. Rucker. And then my, my question or comment or concern is, obviously, we've had some presentations about native plants and things like that. I would ask that we consider an amendment from it being used exclusively in the designing to being something to the extent of recommended or primarily or something like that, because I would just get concerned that there are so many plants that are not South Carolina native or native to the region that might be good for commercial use or other uses. I would be concerned about limiting our district from a finance standpoint, every, every, every other way, to exclusive use of native to the region. So that's really a comment for discussion to see if anybody else had any other concerns about that. Mr. Bray?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. If we do make a change, I will, I don't know if you, if you want to call this an amending the motion, et cetera, or what the amendment's going to be, but since we have ECB open now, I would suggest that we also go ahead and put a date for that annual report, so there's just already on here. I wasn't going to pull it out, but now that it's out, it makes sense. To your question, prior to whatever amendment or motion to amend is, yeah, I'm okay with not going exclusive, but I, I think vague, I think it needs to be, so what you see across many municipals, municipalities is a seventy percent or an eighty percent or something of that sort. Now, this excludes turf grasses, so really, you're just talking plants, bushes, and trees, and if you can't find natives for that at cost, that's more of a lack of trying, because that's, that is a big push now. So, I mean, most of the plants now that we see, minus the dreaded crepe myrtle, are your natives. So I, I could definitely go to an eighty percent or something of that sort.
Percentage. I see you with the finger, but I'm just hearing.
Yeah, I, I think we should talk to our people that are, you know, skilled in that, but there are a lot of plants that are not native, that are not invasive as well, so we can work towards getting much more in what we can do, but I don't want to limit them to, because I talked to several people, and they said it wasn't as realistic to do that, especially around the building. So, anyway, but work to get more plants like that, so.
Dr. Hafner, just out of curiosity, and I know we didn't ask you to do this, but by any chance, have our primary architects, our landscape architects, whomever we use, has anybody reviewed this to let us know? Is it doable? Is it better to do like an eighty percent? Do we have any commentary on that?
I've never heard discussion of percentages, but I have spoken with some folks from Lexington County and met, in fact, this week with our architect and construction company on our current project, and we talked about it being logical to have some more of what you're used to in certain areas and then some variation of natives in areas where it makes sense and it's feasible. So it was kind of a mixed, it wasn't, there was not a percentage ever mentioned in that conversation, so.
Well, then I think what I would ask maybe is that the board consider maybe tabling it for the second reading, and let's get with those, those gentlemen and ladies who do that mostly for our district, because, I mean, if they are like, yeah, let's do it, we can do it exclusively, and it's fine, I'm not having a problem voting for it, but if they're like, more like, hey, give us some latitude, let's go eighty percent or whatever the number may be, but I would just ask that administration follow up and get a recommendation from, from them, the people that we count on to do this stuff. So, is that fair? Is everybody okay with that? I need a second to table it. Second by Ms. Rucker. All those in favor of tabling for now, and we'll put it on the June agenda. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, and thank you so much, Mr. Bray, and I appreciate you bringing that for us. So that's ECB is tabled for June. For more information, Ms. Bickley. Okay, we're going to move right along, Ms. Kessler, to...
Motion to approve second and final reading for proposed revision to Board Policy BE, BEDA, with revision for first, from first reading. Proposed deletion of Board Policy AB, the people in their school district.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Kessler. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Alfred Woden. Board members, do we want to pull any of those for separate consideration? Ms. Rucker?
Yes, I'd like to pull the proposed deletion of Board Policy AB.
Okay, so she wants to...
...in their school district.
We're going to pull the proposed deletion to be considered separately. Any other pulls?
BEDA.
And we're going to pull BEDA as well, and so I guess we're just down to BE. Board members, are any other pulls? Or we're going to go ahead and consider BE only then. So second and final reading of proposed Policy BE. All the, any discussion about proposed Policy BE? Okay, all those in favor then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, and we are now on separate consideration of, we'll take the proposed deletion first, since Ms. Rucker went first. So, Ms. Rucker, if you wanted to speak to the deletion of Policy AB...
Thank you, Ms. Brannan. So for this policy, this is Policy AB, the people in their school district, and the purpose of this policy is ensure board accountability to both the state and the local citizens. So I would like to move that we reinstate Policy AB.
Okay, so let's say, Ms. Rucker, for friendly restatement, would you like to move that we re-adopt Policy AB as written in its entirety?
Yes.
And re-approve it for today's date?
Yes.
And a, and a second on that by Mr. Key. Okay, any further discussion now that we have Ms. Rucker's motion to re-adopt AB in its entirety, worded like it is? And board members, any discussion or questions? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. So Ms. Bickley, you got me? This is AB, re-adopted in its entirety, and that would be for second and final reading.
I would like to say one thing. We, when we decide to go through these, these policies, we tried to get rid of the minutia that's in there, and actually, that is stated in other policies, and we're just being redundant and repetitive, and I thought that's what we were trying to get out of it, and we've discussed that, and everybody's aware of that. So we're either together on what we're doing, or we need to go back to the table and decide what we're doing.
Ms. Rucker?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Kessler. So, yeah, so I know we were going through, and the main focus was getting our policies updated, and I know it had been mentioned in another meeting that, you know, about, you know, kind of consolidating some policies and that kind of thing, and it was mentioned that, you know, any, we're not really addressing duplications, you know, that's not our main focus right now. Our main focus was updating, and since our main focus is updating, I think this is an important policy to keep, and we can always bring it back up at a later date if it...
Ms. Kessler? We certainly don't want to exclude our, the community from that, but when the legal gives you advice, and we all have been aware of this for several months now, I just think we, we don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot about some of these things and try to get down to practical policies.
Madam Chair, thank you. Since this policy first came up for deletion, I have been asking that we pulled it. We pushed it through on the first one, just to make the policy easier. For redundancy, there's about six of the bullet points in here that aren't redundant when you do a quick review, unless there's a new policy in C that would be there, but of what we have, if you go to look, there's some points on here, pretty, pretty prevalent points, too, that aren't redundant. So yes, I'm good for a lot, we're going to be deleting more tonight, and that's great, but some of these were not fully covered in the new policy.
Board members, any other questions or comments? And again, for those of you watching at home, and I know you're enthralled with our discussion, it's Policy AB is what we're referring to. You can pull it up at home, and it's called "The People in Their School District," but I would, I'm glad Ms. Kessler touched on this. I do want to point out that we're not trying to get rid of the people or their school district or their importance to our school district. It's just the attorneys who did the policy review, which was not this group over here, so don't look at them either, but the ones who advised us told us we were covered under BB, but as of right now, I appreciate the discussion. I think we did take the vote, the right, we voted, and so we're going to re-adopt it in its entirety. So we're going to move right along then to BEDA, and I will entertain, board members, if you have a chance to pull that up, and I'll entertain a, a motion on that and then some discussion.
Madam Chair, I move that we go with the second reading of BEDA with the amendment of the policy to say five business days versus just five days.
Thank you, Mr. Bray. And I think that what we looked at was that was, I think we did actually kind of touch on that or discuss that before, and I think we're actually, our practice is five business, because if we get it on Friday, we're still five business days. Dr. Hafner, is there any issue that you know with the amendment of five business?
Uh-uh.
Okay, so he's now made a motion for BEDA to adopt it, but to make that five business days. Board members, and I think you had a second by Ms. Kessler. The motion was by Mr. Bray. Board members, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. And the motion carries as it stands with the addition. Thank you, board members. And now we're moving on to new business. We have some exciting news tonight, and people don't usually say that when they're talking about budgets, but I would like to talk with that for a second before we turn it over to Dr. Hafner. Board members, as you know, most of us were present at our board workshop, budget workshop earlier this month, and we learned we have really good news to our public to share regarding our budget. I'm not going to steal the thunder of our superintendent and her staff, but I would like to remind everyone that what we are asking for, for first reading tonight, is the overall approval of the budget as presented. We're not asking for specific approval or finalizing the requests submitted by administration in the schools yet. All of these items, as well as other board and staff initiatives, are going to be up for discussion, and we will obviously be taking a deeper look at these recommendations at another budget workshop on May 30th. However, in our ongoing efforts at continuous transparency, I want to note for the public at home and those here who could go look up online, that we actually have full budget attachments attached this year for the public to look at what we're thinking about and considering and what's being recommended. It also has recommendations from the school with requests, and those are contained online in our Board Docs. I'm also going to remind the public that we don't really televise our workshops, but they are open meetings, and the public can attend and listen to further detailed discussion. And the reason is, is because we have a pretty lengthy attachment to this, and our schools have worked really hard at giving their wish lists to our superintendent and her staff, and we're going to try to obviously approve as much of that as we can, along with some other stuff, but what we're asking for tonight is going to be our first reading of basically the amount for our general fund budget. And with that, I'm going to turn that over to Dr. Hafner.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. What is being presented to you all this evening is a draft of a budget proposal for the 2023-2024 school year, and up on the screen, you will see what we have included, that we have included some of the main highlights in this budget. Mr. Atkins, thank you. A step increase for all employees is included, a $2,500 salary increase to each cell of the teacher's salary schedule is included, a 25% salary increase to the state base of the bus driver's salary schedule is included, 1% increase to the employer retirement costs, 4% increase to employer health insurance effective January 1st, 2024, and then we have some other additional items, and some of what you see before you are, were items that were mandated by the state and others were our beginning budget that we shared with the board back at the first workshop. Now, the next slide shows you the proposed local and state revenue based on the most recent figures that we have from the State House and our county. These numbers have a possibility to shift prior to our next discussion. They are still in discussion over at the State House, but these are the current calculations that we have to work with. The next slide shows the areas of increase based upon mandates and adjustments with a total for the proposed fiscal year 23-24 general fund budget. I have shared with, with you all a list of proposed expenditures you may want to consider for approval. The public is welcome to review the draft of possible expenditures on Board Docs. We will be able to discuss these items in further detail at the budget workshops, or they are certainly subject to change, but we wanted to at least put those lists before you as Madam Chair mentioned earlier. And then lastly, just, this is a quick overview, Mr. Atkins, that last slide is a slide with our current millage rate of 1,62.9, which is the, you can see, is the lowest in the surrounding area, and I want to be very clear that Lexington, too, is not requesting a millage increase for this budget year to meet the proposed budget. And I want to be very clear that Lexington 2 is not requesting a millage increase for this budget year to meet the proposed budget.
Thank you, Dr. Heffner. I knew that everybody would be excited to hear about that. Um, so, um, again, we've always been proud of these, uh, numbers and that we are very fiscally conservative in Lexington 2. Um, board members, any questions or discussion about the overall draft? I think Ms. Kessler needs to make a motion to approve the first reading, and then we'll open the floor for questions and comments.
Yes, motion to approve first reading of proposed 2023-24 general fund budget.
Motion by Ms. Kessler, second by Ms. Alfred Wooton. Board members, any questions or discussion for tonight's presentation? Mr. Bray.
Five quick points, one question. Uh, first, I think it's Dr. Hefner. Uh, first is the driver incentive award. I really like that concept that they put in there, uh, and also really like the, uh, the school ratios that were through there. I think that really helped. I don't, I've only, this is only my third time, and that made a big difference. I would love to see, as we spoke about earlier, to see it, to get the same kind of ratio tables for our non-teacher positions, for administrators, all, all the other spots that equals about the same amount. Um, and then I would like between the first and the second reading, if, maybe not in an alternate course of action, but some consideration for our step increases when we do them by a percentage. What happens is if we do that year over year over year, we get a much bigger difference or delta from our lowest paid step to our highest paid step. Because if the lowest paid step's 50K and we give it 10%, that goes to 55. And the highest paid's 100, that goes to 110. Then the next year, you're getting a, a 10% or 5% raise off of that 10% versus a set number. So I'm not going as far as saying we should have a regressive step. Maybe we should, because we've been doing this a lot for several years. And so that, if you go back and look from a five-year teacher to a 25-year teacher 10 years ago, that difference is much bigger now than it was then. So maybe a regressive look would make sense. That could really boost up our bottom folks, or just a flat rate, um, that's not a percentage. It's just a, hey, if we're moving every step up, we're going to move every step up by a, a specific number versus a percent that we're multiplying off of that step. I hope that's not too complex, but I would love to see something to that point. So my concern is if we do this for 30 years or 40 years, then our difference between a bachelor's step one and a PhD step 30 is just going to get to where it's, you know, three to one ratio. And that, I don't think that behooves us on a business sense, nor in the classroom. And I think that is all I had, so I appreciate it for now. Yes, I, I combined one and two, so that's why there's four instead of five.
Board members, any other questions, comments, or discussion about the board, the budget as presented for first reading? Okay, there being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. Congratulations on first reading on your first budget, Dr. Hefner. Okay, we're going to move right along to the consideration of resolution to issue annual 8% debt. Dr. Hefner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before you is a resolution to issue an 8% debt. This resolution will cover the bond issue in the fall of 2023 of 11 million, and spring 2024 issue of 3 million. The next resolution will be approved in spring of 2024 to cover bond issues in fall of '24 and spring of '25. The amount not to exceed will be determined in spring of 2024. I will also ask Ray Jones of Parker Poe, if he wouldn't mind stepping forward. Should the board have any questions regarding the resolution? Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, um, for joining us this evening. Board members, do you have any questions about this item?
Question first?
Yeah, you can make a question.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I move that we accept the consideration of resolution to issue annual 8% debt.
Uh, motion by Mr. Bray, second by Ms. Rucker. And, and now we have a motion and a second on the table. Any questions or comments about this? And Mr. Bray has a question.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, this is, um, okay, being the ignorant one in the room. This is just for us to issue up to 8%, but if we don't need to, um, then this isn't saying that we're going to issue all 8%. Um, is that correct, Dr. Hefner or Mr. Bray? Okay.
That is correct. Um, again, my name is Ray Jones with Parker Poe. So actually, you have more 8% debt capacity than what you're authorizing tonight. You're authorizing 14.4 million. 8% debt capacity today is about 25 million and change.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Board members, do we have any other questions? I hate to bring him all the way out for just one question. He probably doesn't mind, though. We'll send him home for supper early. Okay, well, thank you very much, and thank you again for being here and all the work you do, um, for our bonds. And he's been a partner with us for a number of years. Appreciate it, and good to see you, sir.
Good to see you all.
All right, board members, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we're moving on to the consideration of the fiscal year 24 CPIF budget. That's item 12C. I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve consideration for the 24 CPIF budget.
Motion by Ms. Kessler, second by Ms. Alfred Wooton. And board members, any discussion or questions about the proposed CPIF budget? Ms. Rucker.
Yeah, I saw on here that the painting one item, and I know we have done a great job over the past several years with our, our painting program. So I would just like to get an update on that, like where we are at the schedule and that kind of thing, just for more information purposes. And also, we've done some kind of surface work with some of our parking lots and, and things, and it looks amazing. But I feel like at some point, some real, you know, maybe paving work is going to be needed. So I didn't know if that was considered as something we could look at to, to kind of, on maintenance. So that's it.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Mr. McPherson, would you like to?
So your, the question was, well, where are we on our painting schedule? And, and schedules, is it on, on here? Okay. Schedules, um, usually about seven, nine years. It depends on, on the districts. Um, we're going to go a little bit early because the kind of conditions of some of the schools. I think a lot of that has to do with the spraying we did during COVID. There's a lot of moisture and stuff on the walls, which attracts dust and dirt. So, um, the 590,000 goes towards, I'd like to get into Casey, paint Casey, hallways, restrooms. Um, Riverbank needs some, some love in those same aspects. There's some, um, issues in, you know, like at B C High School, love to get in there and paint front office paint, or parts of the front office. Um, all the restrooms really need a good coat of paint, so. And I walked some other schools today, there's plenty of places that need, need a couple coats of paint on it, so. And then we can turn back around once that money's gone and go into classrooms here and there. So it's kind of starting that thing versus waiting three or four years to do it. So, the, um, the thing about the, I'm sorry, go ahead. Uh, the, the other part about the top ceiling and, and coating the parking lots, um, I didn't put that in here, but yeah, like Airport, the Eagle Drive, we could really mill that up and repave that. And we're going to need to get in some of that paving infrastructure in, in a year or two, um, just to start getting serious about that. We kind of did a, a top patch, um, seal coat to make it look good and kind of help protect it, but, um, full, full, full-depth paving will be in the near future.
Thank you very much. And the, and back to the painting, I know a lot of our, I think most of, all of our schools have the strips on the walls where you can, you know, attach different.
Attach strips, yes, ma'am.
Yes. So if we could, I don't know how we can encourage people to use those instead of stick things directly to the walls would, would also help keep the paint.
Thank you.
Looking great. So thank you.
Ms. Kessler.
I have several questions. Um, I was, when I read that the auditoriums at Airport, um, need some rigging and some HVAC, I was thinking that we redid that auditorium just several years back. Or was that not done at that time?
I don't remember doing a lot of work in that, in that auditorium in my five years or five and a half years of being here. I, I, I've gone through and swapped out a bunch of light fixtures. Ms. Dixon, if you know anything of, have we done up in there?
Both auditoriums were done about the same time.
Mr. Chapman.
Ms. Kessler, um, about maybe, maybe four months ago, uh, I had one of our consultants, um, Airport, uh, they needed a, a white, uh, rigging screen for a play. And, uh, so, uh, I went in there and I looked, and that, that sheet that's in the back, uh, it was torn. But also too, when I talked to our consultant who's helping with the pack, uh, I called them, and, uh, they had me, uh, look at up top, uh, the auditorium. And what needs to be fixed is, is the chains in there. There's some chains holding up the rigging, but it was hooked with like the wrong type of cable, and it's starting to stretch. Uh, and it's, uh, we've been using it, but we just need to do the proper thing with, with fixing it. Uh, and I'll be glad to walk you through it so you can see it.
Um, a que, a question about the softball retention field, uh, for Airport. Where is that re, retention wall going in?
So can I drop back to the Airport High School auditorium real quick? We have, over the past, we put a, we upgraded the sound system in there, and we also upgraded the LED lights on the stage.
Yes.
Um, B C High Schools were completely gutted. We didn't do that, but we've replaced systems over there, but we have not done all the way. So the softball retention wall, what I'd like to do is go from basically about bleacher to bleacher and kind of raise that, that, right now, there's about a six-inch little wall back behind there. But behind the, the bleachers is a sloped, sloped, um, dirt there that really doesn't grow grass. So I'd, I'd like to get that up, redo the stairs coming down, and kind of go all the way around back behind the press box.
Okay.
Now, now, we're not talking six or eight foot, we're talking, you know.
Four foot?
Two, well, two, two or three foot to 12 inches.
You've got about a foot, a foot and a half one right now.
I got about a six inch right now.
One and a half.
Okay.
All right. Um, the track at Brooklyn Casey, that, for years, they, they haven't used that track because they've, nobody wanted to take the time to mark it, because you can run track meets there. You just have to do a different kind of marking, because it's not a, a regulation track. Now you want to spend $275,000 to resurface that? Is that track going to be used for hosting a meet?
That track will, it is a non-regulation track. Airport has a regulation track.
Correct, but it can be, you can run, you just have to have your starts at a different position and your finishes at a different position. We did it for years, so I know it can be done.
I, I agree with that, but I, I don't know if, if the track people want to have a meet on a unregulated track.
So we're going to spend $275,000 just to have?
Well, the, the reason to spend the money was, we have a track that's kind of insufficient, so if I have, if we have our kids out there practicing on it, and it's thin, thin metal, they get shin splints, they get injured.
That's where I'm leaning. Maybe we need to transport those kids to Airport and spend the monies there, because that's a regulation track, and then she, it can be used for track needs, even though it's a six-lane track. Just like we have to transport our swimmers to somebody else's pool, because we don't have a swimming pool. So that just seems like an awful amount to put in a track that we're not going to use for, for a competitive event. I understand the purpose for it, and, um, physical education uses it all the time, but I was just kind of curious as to why we were now all of a sudden going to spend $275,000 for that. Are we going to replace the lights at the baseball fields and softball fields as they go out? Or are we just going to completely do away and replace?
So every year, I spend $6,000 or $7,000 swapping out a light bulb that went bad or a ballast that went bad in, in those different stadiums. Um, I'd like to completely swap out, pull everything down, put everything back up, so it's a complete swap to LED.
So that's, uh, it's going to be over a million dollars, right?
Something close to that, yes, ma'am.
Okay, uh, what about the playground equipments at Congaree and some of the other facilities? We've got schools that ha, are sitting on monies that they have, and some of the schools have used some of their money for playground equipment while others haven't. And so now, all of a sudden, we're hit with $245,000 for playground equipment for one of our schools?
Yes, ma'am. And last year, we spent 200, with 203,000 at Wood Elementary.
Do you recall, I asked the same question last year. I, I don't understand the.
And, and I would have to take that back to the superintendent, because I don't have control over the, the school's monies, but, um, i- in the renovations, we gave, we built Riverbank, put new playground, and we, we built Casey and put, put new playground there. Saluda River, we kind of reused some old stuff. Uh, don't know if they put a new one there or not. I don't think they did. But, you know, they, they actually, they did put a new one there. So going to Wood was kind of making even across the district, and now going to Congaree is kind of finishing that, that, making everybody kind of, kind of whole on that aspect, in my opinion.
We've got pressure washing again for $70,000, and we spent more than that last year. It seems like to me we could buy a, a, um, commercial pressure washer. And we would have it in the storehouse to use and pull out every time we needed it. We could be saving some money rather than spend this kind of money getting pressure washer. We, have we ever thought about? Because I know we, I threw the same thing out last year. I just, I, I think we could buy a commercial one and have it and, and use it. Um, a, a local company just came and did our house, and I don't know how expensive it was, they used the same piece of equipment that they used 13 years ago when they started pressure washing our house. So that equipment is pretty durable, and if we bought the equipment, we would have it and we could use it. Has anybody looked into the fact of, of purchasing, so we would have it? Because we've got sidewalks right now that could be pressure washed probably at every school.
True, and part of that's in our contract with the Bud Group of pressure washing right around the fronts and stuff like that. But if you go to Pressure Wash B C High School Football Arena, that, that's a lot of time. If we had our own equipment, we could, but then you have the manpower. So you need to pull manpower from other places to do that. So it's kind of a, a catch 22 on labor and equipment.
All right, concrete. Where is that concrete work going to be done?
So we have, I'd like to, part of it, B C High School softball islands, there's about six islands in there, that right now are kind of dirt and mulch. And I'd like to, um, take those and pour those in concrete, put a little circle in there, put like a tree, like we did Airport High School student parking lot. Riverbank on the side of their teachers' parking lot, there's a lot of mulched areas over there with little lanes about three foot wide right between cars. I'd like to concrete a few of those in, leave mulch and, and, and landscape on the ends. The C E C, put a small pad out there for some picnic tables, so they could have meeting with families and stuff like that. Fulmer, the center island at Fulmer is kind of on about a 30 or 40 degree slope right down there between two sets of cars. I like to concrete that little part in, the, the slope part, leave the ends with trees and landscape. B C High School has broken sidewalks back behind the baseball field. Like to take those out and, and repair those. Airport High School has a few themselves. So right there's a start.
Okay. Uh, I didn't realize that must have been downloaded on, um, board doc. Okay. All right, then you're going to get three newer vehicles this year.
Yes, ma'am.
Who, who's, needs, who would be using those vehicles?
Those would be specifically for my maintenance vehicles.
Okay, who's using the white truck that's parked at District Office all the time?
That is owned by Sedexo, I believe. There's, they, they own two pickup trucks, F-150, I believe it is. So Sedexo bought that themselves. It's, it's not.
Okay.
Is there another white truck?
We had someone that had, used a white truck last year, and I was just wondering who, if that was, truck was being used this year? Because it seems like we bought three last year, did we not?
No, ma'am, I haven't bought trucks.
How many, how many last year?
I haven't bought any of those in two, two or three years.
Did you buy a bucket truck last year?
I bought a dump truck about two or three years ago. My, my, my bucket truck's 28 years old, so.
Yeah.
The one I'm asking to purchase.
Okay. I just think we're spending an awful lot of money. I just want to make sure that everything is, is needed and that we're not wasting and spending money just because we have some. That was my only que, reason for questioning.
And I appreciate the questions, and I'm not going to bring something just to waste money. That's never, never what I do, so.
Ms. Rucker, I think, then Mr. Bray.
All right, so yes, there is a lot of, um, money in here for LEDs, um, you know, for the different fields and that kind of thing.
Yes, ma'am.
And I can understand where you wouldn't want to just, you know, change them out as they go up, because it's just going to be a lot of time to go up and down and that kind of thing.
You really can't swap out, uh, like, take this bulb out, put this new bulb. You, you got to pull the whole system down, the whole rigging.
Yeah.
Rewiring, ballast, everything.
And, um, usually with LEDs, they usually have a long warranty period on them. So do we track that? So if we do this full, you know, change out, and then one of them is faulty and goes out, do we, you know, make sure we return it for the, under the warranty and track those type things?
It's, what I understand is 10 years parts and warranty is, is what we're talking about right now. We got to put it out to bid, so.
Right, but is, they're all pretty similar. So, I mean, you do, you do track that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
The, the, the Musco lights we have at the B C High School Football Stadium, they called us and told us one was out.
Okay.
And they said, we're going to line up and get a guy come out and repair it, so.
Awesome, okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, thank you, ma'am. Uh, kind of point of order for you, Madam Chair. Uh, a, a bunch of these questions that, um, that Ms. Kessler asked, and, and I also asked, you gave us some great answers prior to this. So I'm just going to ask that we can put those responses into the minutes, so that when they're approved next time, anybody can see, because you're not going to be able to hop in here and see where those concrete things are, and that way, there's a little more detail. Um, so I would like you to consider that, and then I can come back to the next points.
Yeah, we can talk about that, but go ahead to the next points.
Perfect, and those would be mainly for the truck replacement, I think people seeing how many hundred thousand miles that those three have and what year would be important and they give you some of these for the concrete detail and for the painting, and just in future, I think having that detail would make a CPIF budget approval a lot easier. I, I can't read, oh, I really appreciate that we are expanding the turf at Congaree and Riverbank, that is fantastic, I'm glad that made it into the CPIF. And then two, two other points, the track. Don't we have architectural plans to make that track big enough? Weren't there some drawings?
It would actually get into, almost like, almost into the softball or maybe it went into the softball a little bit, so, in that cage area, so... That was right before when I got here, they had some conversations about that, but I don't think, I don't think they could make us... But, it depends where you put it, I guess, but yeah.
In the world of CPIF, using 8% and kind of building our capital projects through this, I would suggest that we pull the track off until we can make a grander plan, because I do agree with this being a concrete track, that doesn't mean that doing a 275K Band-Aid that will only last a certain number of years, if we don't have a bigger plan, I get the point of saving shins and I've played on that track a billion times, I know how terrible it is, but until, and maybe we can hold it off a month or two months, but I don't think that it warrant spending that money until we have a grander plan, because what will be our plan in seven years to just keep doing it? I think we need to have a bigger plan. And that leads me to my last question back for you, Madam Chair, is, are we treating this as a first and second reading? Or we're just approving the CPIF? I think it should be a first reading versus...
Thank you, and we'll just do a first reading of this, since we approved the bonds tonight, I think we have a little bit of time before we need the whole list approved, obviously by the end of June. Do you need any reason for this whole list to be approved to start something before June? You're looking at me like...
If, if I have this approved, I can, I can go ahead and get, get the ball rolling, get stuff ordered, maybe get some work done. We're really late in getting the summer work anyway, so if we wait till end of June, then nothing really gets done this summer. I don't mean to pressure you.
Not to be a stickler of financial accounting, but since this is for the next fiscal year, I get that we can put the ball rolling, but a first, a first reading will still allow you to do that without it being appropriated for that time.
I don't know that, is that a statement?
Yes.
Sorry, there you go.
I think it's intended money to be used for, from the CPIF that we're going to end up issuing later in July or August, but I think what they're telling us is if we go in and approve it, that he could begin the ordering process to try to get that done as quickly as possible once the money comes in and issues.
Or I could start paying in Casey Elementary, I mean, you know, and the money comes in September, but we can go ahead and do the work and then cover it until the rest of it comes in, I think is how it goes, so...
So, I think what we're hearing is that we might need first and second reading tonight?
I would...
I think we need first and second reading tonight, and then Ms. Kessler.
I do, I want to get back to Mr. Bray. When you talk about a grander scheme, are you talking about developing it into a regulation track?
I am open to anything, as long as it make, we have some type of plan.
You weren't on board then, so that's, from past history, I don't want to tell you, we beat that subject to death trying to work a way for a regulation track to be put there. Every way you turned it, it would not go unless we wanted to sacrifice one of the other sports arena and bottom line is, we, nothing could be done at that field to develop it and to save the baseball field.
So for a 10-year plan, 20-year plan, our goal is just to continue resurfacing this as a capital kind of thought from a historical perspective?
From what I understood and remembered is that basically we were going to keep the BC track basically for practices and PE classes like Ms. Kessler also mentioned, who also use it a lot, and keep it for the community of the school to be able to use, but that all meets and stuff really were to be done either at District State, Airport's campus, excuse me, that's old school, Airport's campus, or either at other places in other districts. So, because we even discussed a district track at one point, but, you know, so that would have been my only comment as to the 275, it is a big expenditure, but I think that track gets a lot of use and could get a lot of use and we do have PE students who could be using it a lot more frequently and we just don't want to injure those injuries.
But if we're going to do that, Ms. Bray, and we have got to put doors and we've got to have people that know how to shut and lock doors because you see skateboards out there and everything else on that track and it's not taken care of. So to, that doesn't seem like much money to you, but it seems like an awful lot of money to me, and if we're not going to have a standard track, would we want to put that type of track covering on there because you're talking about a very nice covering?
So the track at Airport High School is a Mondo track, they use that in the Olympics. The Mondo track for BC High School costs $380,000. So you can go down to about $100,000, $120,000 and get like super cheap, or you can go kind of middle of the road is what I did, about 250, 275, whatever that number was. So I kind of went middle of the road, urethane sandwich type system, 14 millimeters thick, I could go 13 millimeter, save a little bit, but I'm like, safety to the kids, you know, why not just do something just solid right in the middle, you know, being conservative with our money, not going with Cadillac and not going with something that we're going to have to work on in three years, rip it up and put something new down, so...
I appreciate that, the one thing I would say to kind of making sure it's closed is for a long time, and maybe this isn't how it happens now, I haven't been around there lately, but there was wooden boards that covered the storm drains, and what would happen is those wooden boards would stay there so that when soccer played, that you wouldn't step on a storm drain because the storm drains inside of the track. Well, why that track tore up so quick is those wooden boards with little turf tapered, taped over them would keep the storm water from being able to drain in the storm drain and so the entire track would just send underwater. I don't think that's changed, maybe it has, but if, but when we go to put $275,000 for whatever the effective life of that would be, call it seven years, let's make sure that we're getting the full seven years out of it and that those storm drains are fully open. I, I feel pretty confident that some of them, you can barely even tell there's a storm drain there, just because of years of it being covered and encroached by good old Bermuda grass.
I'll go walk it, but I don't, wood over storm drains doesn't ring a bell with me, so, but I'll definitely go walk it, so...
Yeah, I think I would walk it because what he's saying is you might, I'd be able to see it because the grass has grown over it, but clearly our architects would have the plan, the original plans that should show where the location of a storm drain would be, so maybe you could work with them and find out the location. Okay, so Board Members, any other comments or questions? We have first and second reading motion for the CPIF budget. Okay, being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And motion carries. All right, thank you so much, Mr. McPherson, and we are moving along to the consideration of administration to apply for Title I and et cetera funds. Dr. Hafner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I would ask our Director of Title I and Academic Assistance, Ms. Hope Pirana, to step forward please, and she's our next.
Good evening, Dr. Hafner, members of the Board. Tonight I would like to request approval, which is required annually, to apply for federal funds, that's for Title I, Title III, and neglected and delinquent funds. The Title I preliminary fiscal year 2024 allocation of $2,945,705.63 indicates a 10.5% decrease from last year. The preliminary fiscal year 2024 allocation of $105,69.24 for Title I Part D, neglected and delinquent funds, which is provided to Three Rivers, represents an 8% increase for the upcoming school year.
Me in, please.
Yes. The Title I preliminary fiscal year 2024 allocation is $2,945,705.63, and the preliminary fiscal year 2024 allocation for the Title I Part D, neglected and delinquent funds that go to Three Rivers, is $105,69.24.
I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we authorize the administration to apply for Titles I, III, and neglected and delinquent or N and D funds.
Thank you, Mr. Bray. Second by Ms. Alfred Wooton. Board Members, any other questions or discussion on the application for the Title I funds, which is an annual report? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, Board Members, we are now moving on to Item 12E, and we did have a little bit of a typographical error in this one. We're actually only going to ask, we're going to do, we're going to break this up, Ms. Kessler and I are, we're only going to ask for consideration of first and second reading about KDDA only, so we're going to take that one first, and then first reading of the rest of the policies, but not BEDB or BEDH because we still have some further review that we're trying to get through our legal team over at the other end of the table. So we're not going to have BEDB or BEDH, we pulled for further review and you wouldn't have probably seen either of those loaded, and then first and second reading would be of KDDA. So Ms. Kessler, I'll move to you to, a motion for first and second reading of proposed revisions to board policy KDDA.
Motion to approve first and second reading for KDDA.
Motion by Ms. Kessler, second by Ms. Alfred Wooton. Any discussion or questions, Board Members? Okay, being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Ms. Kessler.
Ms. Bray, I got it. Thank you, no, I wrote that down when you said it. A motion to approve first reading for a proposed revision to board policy B A, B B, B B A, B B B, B C, B C A, B H C, F A, F B, review of board policies B B A A, B C B, with no changes, proposed addition to board policy G B dash G B D, with proposed deletion of board policy B G, B G C slash B G D, B G F, and proposed administration ruling B G, B B, B G D dash R, and proposed deletion of administrative ruling B G dash R.
Thank you, Ms. Kessler, that was awesome, and I'm going to give Ms. Rucker the second on that one. Board Members, does anyone want to pull any of those for separate consideration? Okay, any discussion then on any of the ones on the motion? Being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And motion carries. Ms. Kessler, we're moving on to Item 12F.
I make a motion that we approve release time for religious instruction of Casey Elementary School, Congaree Elementary School, Riverbank Elementary School, River, Saluda River Academy for the Arts, Springdale Elementary, Wood Elementary, Busby Creative Arts Academy, Fulmer Middle School, Northside Middle School, Pine Ridge Middle School, Brooklyn KC High School, and New Bridge Academy contingent upon completion of the appropriate documentation per policy J H C B.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Kessler, a second by Ms. Rucker. Board Members, any questions? This is pretty much an annual request. Being none, all those in favor, yes sir.
Airport's not on this list, is that just typical? Okay, thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next, we move on to out-of-state or overnight requests.
Motion to approve out-of-state and overnight student travel for Brooklyn KC High School golf team to the 3A State Golf Tournament in Woolridge, South Carolina, May the 15th through the 16th, 2023, which is ratified. Two, Airport High School J ROTC cadet to the Cadet Leadership Challenge at Fort Jackson, June the 4th through the 10th, 2023. And three, Airport High School French Club to Paris, France, June 6th through 14th, 2024. Not a bad trip.
Okay, and Ms. Kessler made the motion, Mr. Bray made the second. Any discussion or questions, Board Members?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to say that it makes me excited to see our kids going across the pond for the first time in a long time, so kudos to the Airport French Club.
Excellent, that sounds great, thank you, Mr. Bray. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, we are now down to announcements, and first of all, I want a lot of congratulations to go out under these announcements. At 10:00 AM, May 23rd, we have our Target Exit Ceremony at New Bridge Academy. At 7:00 PM Tuesday, May 23rd, is the adult ed graduation at Airport High School. Wednesday morning at 8:00 AM bright and early, May 31st, Airport High School will be graduating at their stadium, and 8:00 AM on Thursday, June 1st, BCHS will be graduating at their stadium. And between all of that, we do have a Memorial Day holiday that we will all be enjoying. For those of you not graduating, and May 31st is going to be a half day, as well as June 1st will be a half day, and June 1st, last day of school. June 2nd and 5th is the last couple of days for teachers and staff, so you don't really get to leave on June 1st, we want to keep you around for another couple of days. Aye is 5:30 PM, June 15th will be our budget hearing at 5:30 here at the Innovation Center, and then at 6 o'clock followed by our regular board meeting. Board Members, please also add to your calendars and thank you for responding so quickly that we are going to do that additional budget workshop next Tuesday a week, May 30th, and we're going to begin that at 5:00 PM. So May 30th, 5:00 PM, Board Members, for a budget workshop. For those at the audience and at home, we will be hosting that at the District Education Center and it will be also publicized, you'll be able to see notices on the website. And with that, we wish you all a happy end of the year and enjoy a little bit of time off coming up and hope to see some of you hanging out with us in June for our board meeting. Ms. Kessler, do you have a motion for executive session?
Yes, I make a motion that the Board of Trustees enter a closed session for the consideration of personnel appointments, reappointments, resignation, and contractual services.
I have a motion by Ms. Kessler, second by Mr. Bray. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, and now we will move into executive session. Thank you for coming this evening and safe travels home in this weather.
I make a motion that the meeting be reconvened in open session and appropriate affidavits executed.
I have a motion by Ms. Kessler, a second by Ms. Chitty Castles. Any discussion? Oh, well, Ms. Castle's got it. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. We are now back in executive session, I mean back in open session. No votes were taken in an executive session, but now we do have some motions we'd like to take and action to take on items discussed in executive session. I'll turn that over to Ms. Kessler for some motions.
I make a motion that we accept administrative recommendations on an initial hire of a relative of a school board member.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Kessler, a second by Ms. Rucker. Board members, any questions or discussion? And Ms. Offord-Wooton has issued her recusal and was absent during discussion. Okay, board members, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next, Ms. Kessler.
Resignation, motion, make a motion to approve resignation retirement termination of the 22-23 resignation retiree termination, 22-23 resignation retirements end of year, 23-24 did 23-24 did not accept contracts. New hires and appointments certified. 22-23 recommended teacher appointments. 23-24 recommended teacher appointments. 23-24 recommended teacher appointments retirees. New hires and appointments support staff. 22-23 recommended support appointees. 23-24 recommended support appointees. Recommended support appointees retired for '23-24. New hires and appointments for temp part-time employees. 22-23 paid hourly timesheet. New hires and appointees. That ends my motion.
Yeah, we're gonna do that next. I have a motion to approve all of those at the superintendent's recommendation. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Bray. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion that we approve the recommendation of the administration to appoint Tiffany as assistant principal at Brooklyn Casey High School.
I have a motion by Ms. Kessler, I have a second by Ms. Alfred Wooton. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I make a motion that we approve the administration's recommendation to put Elizabeth Kendall Carter Skelton as assistant principal at Riverbank Elementary.
Motion by Ms. Kessler, second by Ms. Alfred Wooton. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to accept administration's recommendation to name Sky Brown Strickland as district education sent, to District Education Center as the CFO for the '23-24 school year.
Motion by Ms. Kessler, second by Mr. Bray. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Please tell me that's all. Make a motion to authorize the superintendent to negotiate contract with Flock &amp; Rowley with consult, with consultation with our legal counsel.
Motion by Ms. Kessler, do I have a second? Second by Ms. Alfred Wooton. Motion carries. I think that's all of our items from executive session. Dr. Hefner, or did we miss anything, Dr. Cooper? Okay, then I will next entertain a motion to adjourn by Mr. Bray, second by Ms. Alfred Wooton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?